All right. Welcome, everybody, to council meeting. Glad to have you here. Welcome to our gallery that's here. Glad to have you all here. Thankful for the media coming today. Welcome. And before we start, we'll have an opening prayer by Councilor Court. Please?
Our Father in Heaven, we're thanked for many blessings. We're thanked for the opportunity of living in this free and beautiful country. Please bless those levels of government that have saved our people, that they will be wise in their choices. Please bless us as a council, that we may do what is right for the town of Carstens. We say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. For the benefit of the audience that's out there watching this on the cable TV when it's shown, this is the meeting of the Committee of the Hold, held on May the 1st, 2018. Welcome to our viewing audience. Call to order now. You've looked at the additions, and is there any additions to the agenda for tonight? Seeing none?
I moved to adopt.
You moved?
Yeah.
Mayor Colin moved to adopt. All in favor? Okay. So, we've got Mr. Robin Heffner here tonight.
I get to go first?
You're first.
All right.
Yeah. Yeah. Just don't ask for any more money than you already get.
I'm not here to do that.
Robin is the Shunoc Arch Regional Library CAO/CEO.
CEO.
And I work with him on the Shunoc Arch Board and on the Finance Committee for the Shunoc Board. And Robin's very capable, and we're glad to have you here to discuss with our council what your role is and what our role is.
That's exactly right.
Glad to have you here.
So, thank you very much for your time this evening. It shouldn't take more than 10 minutes or so, although if you have questions, we can talk as long as you want. The purpose of my visit is, as Dennis mentioned, I mean, Councilor Barnes mentioned, purely informational. So, every municipal election, we like to go visit all our members, and by "we" I mean me, talk to new councilors, and for those who've been on council previously, just give you a bit of an update of what Shunoc Arch is, what we do, how we fit into your local library service, and just how things are looking in the library world in general. So, yeah, just have a quick outline. I sometimes do PowerPoint, but this can be conversational. I don't think the PowerPoint adds kind of value. You do have a copy of the presentation in your packages there, along with some other stuff. We've got our annual impact report, which is sort of a one-pager on what happened in 2017, a bit of information about regional library systems in Alberta and what we do, and a copy of our current plan of service, and I'll talk about some of those things in my presentation. So, just a quick outline. I'll just do a quick overview of regional library service in Alberta, a quick history of Shunoc Arch. I'll speak a little bit about our system agreement and our plan of service, and then budgets, funding, and governance, which is often the ones of most interest to municipal councils, the services that we provide, which is probably of primary interest to your local library board, and then some highlights from 2017. So, Alberta's regional library systems exist to raise the level of service available to Alberta residents outside of the urban areas primarily. So, we serve about 1.1 million residents outside of Edmonton and Calgary. We're considered public libraries under the Libraries Act. We have our own piece of legislation. It's a wonderful 30-pager. It's nice, simple, easy to interpret, and that's what governs our activities, the Act and regulations. So, basically, what we do is we partner with municipalities, or more accurately, municipalities partner with each other to form regional library systems, and that effectively provides a cost-effective way to deliver library services to your community. Shunoc Arch tends to focus on the behind-the-scenes activities and scenes or activities where you can expect to generate economies of scale by working together. So, and that frees up your local librarian to focus on serving your community specifically. Shunoc Arch is the youngest regional library system in the province. There are six others. Some of them started in the 50s, but we, Shunoc Arch was inaugurated in 1992 after about a two-year sort of needs assessment kind of exploratory process. So, at that point, 22 municipal members signed on. We've now grown to 40 municipal members. The most recent one, just joining last year, Waterton, ID of Waterton joint, which was a nice, a nice sort of addition to the services that they offer, those few permanent residents of Waterton. Those long cold winters are now a little bit less long, fewer than Waterton. So, and as I sort of mentioned before, Shunoc Arch is actually formed by an agreement between municipalities. So, the original agreement was signed in 1992. It's still in effect. It's proved to be a nice, robust agreement. It's survived the advent of the Internet and Google and everything like that, and still serves its purpose. So, the agreement lays out what the role of Shunoc Arch, library staff and library board, and also the role of the local library board. And so, that's, the roles are kind of differentiated there. Because it's a very general document, we have to do a plan of service, which is basically where we go and talk to our members, talk to, in particular, our member library staff and member library boards, about how we can best serve the needs of the, of the community or assist them in serving the needs of their community. So, the plan of service kind of says what we do, and then the needs, or, sorry, the system agreement says what we do, and then the plan of service is how we're going to do it over the next brief period. Our current plan of service ends at the end of 2018, so we're just in the process of putting together our, our next plan of service, which will be 2019 through 2022. And that should come to the Shunoc Arch Board for approval at our August meeting. Terms of funding and budgets, our annual budget is about $4 million, and there's a bit of a chart there. It's probably hard to read in a smaller size, but the two, basically, the two chunks on the right-hand side represent the municipal contribution. So, there's a municipal fee, and there's also a fee for library boards. So, every municipality pays a base per capita operating fee, which I think for this year is $7.85 per capita. In addition, municipalities that have library boards also pay a library board fee. Sometimes a municipality pays that, sometimes a library board pays that. Ultimately, if you trace it back, it's all municipal money, and so that's why we just kind of lump it under the municipal. We also get a significant operating grant from the provincial government, and in fact, that's one of the reasons that the library systems are formed, is that when you form a library system, it actually brings a whole new layer of granting from the provincial government. So, it's about a million dollars. So, it basically brings, creates about an extra million dollars that is shared amongst municipalities for the delivery of library services. So, the levy is set by the Shunoc Arch Library Board with the approval of councils. So, when we're drafting our current budget, which will be approved, hopefully, if I do my job rate, it'll be approved by our library board in the August meeting, and then the fee will come out to municipal councils for approval in the fall. And so, in order for any change to the fee to be enacted, it requires approval of two-thirds of councils representing two-thirds of the population. And what that, what that does is it allows, it prevents either Lethbridge from going on their own to pass a budget. By the same token, all of the smaller municipalities can't quite get enough population together to pass it on their own, too. So, a nice, a nice balance between the one large municipality that we have and the smaller municipalities, which together make up about half of the population of the region. So, it's a system that's worked, that's worked quite well over the years. In terms of governance, we have a pretty large board. It's a one-member, one-vote model, plus a couple of others hang, hangers-on. There's a ministerial appointment and one from Lethbridge Public Library as well. So, it's over 40 members on our board, and so it only meets three times a year. So, as such, most of the work is actually done in committees, and Councilor Barnes had mentioned, the Finance Committee that he's on. There's also a committee for planning and a committee for marketing and communications, and then there's our executive committee. So, by the time a policy or whatever comes to the board, it's pretty much been viewed by half of the board anyway. So, not to say that the board is just a rubber stamp. There is, of course, there's lots of discussion that happens at the board, lots of questions and stuff like that. So, that basically represents your, your voice in terms of, in terms of how this, in this part of the province. Any questions so far? I'm tearing through this pretty quickly. Here, nothing. I'll proceed to the, to the services. So, this is just a, a quick overview of some of the services that we provide. As I mentioned, a lot of the stuff tends to be behind the scenes. So, the big one is bibliographic services. So, Shunoc Arch, one of the things that happened when Shunoc Arch came on the scene is that the acquisitions and the cataloging and processing of library materials moved to the Shunoc Arch facility. So, your, your local library retains autonomy in terms of what it orders for its shelves and the amount of money that it chooses to spend, but the ordering is done through Shunoc Arch. And in 2017, we spent $963,000 on library materials collectively for the system, and so when we're interfacing with our vendor, as far as they're concerned, like, that's the amount of money that is being spent, and so we get a very good discount on the materials that we purchase.
Now, somebody mentioned, and I, we talked about this at the last board meeting, and I asked the question, what that discount is, and it's quite substantial, it's about a 40% discount, that we realize by being a member of the board, rather than buying our own products at a full price, we, through the Shunoc Board, they buy all of our stuff at a 40% discount, so that's a big savings.
For sure. It extends your, your budget considerably.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, so the materials come to Shunoc Arch, we make it shelf-ready, put the stickers on it, then we send it out to, to your library there. So, it's a nice streamlined process. The librarian can spend the time choosing the materials and, you know, interfacing with the community, you know, what kind of materials are in demand in this community, and then they just send the order to us, and we take care of all the backend stuff, the miserable stuff dealing with accounts and invoices reconciliation and all that kind of stuff. We also provide a pretty robust IT infrastructure, so a lot of our services are networked, including the system where the, the books are checked in and checked out. That's all managed through Shunoc Arch. We're the Internet service provider for your library, so the Alberta government pays for the library's connection to the Supernet, but the Supernet isn't anything unless you do something with it. So, we provide the Internet service. We buy collectively for the system and deliver things at email service. We have remote file storage, firewalls, threat protection, so antivirus, anti-spam, all that kind of stuff, all happens at Shunoc Arch. So, this stuff, those are things that your local library doesn't have to worry about. One of the things that the libraries tend to appreciate is if a computer goes down in the library, whether it's a public computer or a staff computer, they can just call our technicians, and we'll either come out and fix it, or we'll send out a swap computer, or we'll even sometimes can fix it remotely or over the phone. It's a help desk, it's included in the fee, and so basically, there's no cost for IT support for your local library, which is especially, I mean, I imagine in Carstens, there are, there's a good number of people that do IT support. If you're in Milo or if you're in Gran, or, yeah, Gran or Glenwood, a little harder to find IT support, and if you do find it, you pay for it. So, it's a big, a big service there. Public services, we have four librarians on staff that will basically assist your library with pretty much any, anything they need in operating the library, so whether it's a policy question, a human resources-related question, a question related to the Libraries Act, or, yeah, any aspect of reporting. Every, every library, of course, has reporting requirements for the government, so we help libraries with that kind of stuff. Anything they might encounter in their day-to-day, we help them with, and if there's a technological question that comes into the library, someone has, you know, they received a tablet as a gift for Christmas, they don't know what to do with it, often people go to the library and get assistance there. So, if they exceed the, the knowledge of the local library, library manager, then they, they can call us and we'll help them with that kind of stuff as well. So, sort of acting as a backstop for any service that your, your library offers. Terms of resource sharing, all of the libraries in the system, their collections basically behave as one big collection, so if you reside in Carstens, the book you want is in Lethbridge, you can just place a hold on it, and our delivery trucks will bring it to you. Most libraries get two to three stops a week, and so the stuff always arrives very quickly. And for myself, I'm always impressed with how quickly stuff shows up on my desk.
How many delivery vehicles are there again?
We have two that go out regularly and then a backup.
In the backup?
Yeah, so, which, I'm glad we do, because I had to use it tonight, because our other two vehicles were, were, were out in the field. So, I drove a big, empty, three-quarter-ton Ford van out here tonight, which is fine. Yeah, we put about, as you'll see on the little, the little one-pager there, we put about 150,000 kilometers on our vans every year, which is, I forget what, 16 times across Canada each year or something, so we put a lot of miles on. I know when I mentioned the people that I work at Shunoc Arch, that's what they always, they're always like, "Oh, you're the people who bring me my books?" So, and that's all they really know about us, which is fine, as I say, we're behind the scenes as well. So, we also have a mandate from the province. As of last year or so, they began giving, giving us a small additional grant to extend services to First Nations. First Nations have historically been unable to participate in library services fully, just because it's, it's a very municipal-focused service, and there was no provision for a band or a tribal administration to even create a library board and access those types of grants. So, as you know, there probably, there, there is a public library in standoff, which is the only public library on a reserve in Alberta right now, and the way they're able to do that is the school authority actually joined the system with the money funneling from the tribal administration through the school authority. And school authorities can join regional library systems under the Act, and so that's how we kind of made that happen. But there was still, at Brockett, on the County Nation, of course, there wasn't quite the, they didn't quite have the population base to get the sort of momentum going, so thanks to that funding from the province, we can now offer full system services to, to those residents as well. Some of the highlights from 2017. The good news is people are still reading and they're still borrowing books from the library. We find usage to be pretty steady, with increases in the digital services realm in particular, but, so 1.7 items loaned last year, so that's about eight items per resident, and that's, that's not per library card holder, but per resident, 8.5 items in 2017. Libraries are sending a quarter of a million items back and forth to each other to satisfy patron demand, and actually, Carstens is a huge net lender, so that tends to be an indication that you have a good collection. Everyone wants to access your collection, which is, which is nice. The, the electronic resources, so if you have a library card, you can, you can go to, onto the library website and download ebooks, audiobooks, music, streaming video, all of that stuff is available, and we're seeing that increase of about 10% year over year. Yeah, and we had 71,000 items to be, to the catalog last year. So, looking forward, we spent the fall talking to our members about what they would like from us in the next four years, and what we're finding is that the libraries are wanting us to be even more involved in helping them to deliver services. A lot of libraries would like to deliver programming, but they just don't have the resources. We can go up to the communities, build partnerships, broker. There's a lot of agencies out there that want to deliver programs, but they don't have a venue, or, you know, they're looking to extend their reach out from Lethbridge into the surrounding areas. So, we kind of see our role stepping into helping to broker those partnerships. We're looking at possibly a mobile services initiative, so like a literacy bus kind of thing that would come out to community fairs. So, if there's a community fair in Carstens or Glenwood, a parade or whatnot, we would send a bus out there and partner with the local library to get people signed up. So, it's a promotional tool and also getting books into the hands of kids and families and people, sort of initiative. So, we're pretty excited about that. We did apply for a grant to fund that, which heard today that, or that grant wasn't successful, but we have other resources as well for funding other grants, possibilities. Yeah, and we've also just hired a marketing person, who is our first communications person. The libraries were frustrated that they have all this great stuff, and they feel like even in the smaller communities, their residents don't know what, what the library has to offer, so. And we've been sort of doing best effort marketing for 10 years since I've been at Shunoc Arch, but we're librarians, we don't really, you know, marketing is a science, there's a whole skill behind it that we just don't have it, and so we're hoping to really raise the bar in terms of marketing over the next few years. And that, unless you have any questions, I think that pretty much...
I wanted to mention to the group here about the renovation project that is going to go on at the Shunoc Arch.
Oh, right, yes, that's good. I should, I should put that in my presentation as a matter of course.
Yeah.
Yeah, last year, we received, after much lobbying, after many years of lobbying, $2.1 million from Alberta Infrastructure to update our headquarters facility. We, last summer, did an RFP, hired an architect, and that, we should be breaking ground or smashing down walls, starting in, hopefully, mid-June, renovating our headquarters, basically to update it. We have a ton of temporary partitions and stuff in our facility, very awkward flow of materials, so we're hoping to refine our processes and, yeah, use this opportunity to update our HVAC and stuff like that to get ourselves ready for the next 25 years.
And hopefully, our roof isn't going to leak anymore.
The roof should be fine for a while now. We had a catastrophic roof failure a few years ago, and we had water pouring into the facility, but, and it was also coming up from under the floor, but we, I think we've dealt with those, those issues, so.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you, Robin.
Thank you, and congratulations. You have a really good library here, a very well-funded library. In fact, I think you were, I was looking on the, the Alberta Government website today, and Carstens is in the top 30. They always do a top 30 funders, and so Carstens is right up there in terms of your per capita funding that you give to your, your libraries. So, of course, you're rewarded with the top-notch library service, so if any questions do come up, you have my card there, it's in, it's in the folder, and I'm happy to answer any questions at any time, so, thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you again. Okay. Mr. Parfus, thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Good to see you.
See you at the table.
So, I'm here to talk today about mail rates, just to further our conversation that we had two months ago now, and at that time, I was asked to go back to the chamber and see what the chamber had to say about it. I am here to report the chamber was not in favor of it. In fact, I was quite disappointed in the reasoning. The reasoning behind it was there were no members of the board at the chamber that owned their commercial properties, and so they didn't feel that it was beneficial to even take a look at it. So, I was a little disappointed with that rationalization. I spoke with a few other local store owners myself, just to kind of see where people were, were feeling on that. I, I think my disappointment is probably fairly universal there. I want to emphasize again that when, when I suggested this, it wasn't a case of making the suggestion that this was going to be a huge financial difference one way or the other, because it's not. It's more of a symbolic gesture of fairness, and, and so that's what I'm, I'm not asking for an equalization. I don't think that would be fair either, but I would request that we see some lowering of the commercial, non-residential mail rate in comparison to the residential rate. Carstens currently has a difference of roughly about 71%, so non-residential pays about 71% higher. Raymond and McGrath are at 62 and 66. Fort McLeod's at 104, so they're way the other side. Clarets Home's at 87, Pritchett Creek's at 24, way the other side. Nat and I couldn't get current numbers for it, but they're at about 47, and Lethbridge is at 139%. And I don't know whether you've heard recently, but this discussion's been happening in, in the city of Lethbridge's council chambers as well. Obviously, they have a really big gap there that needs to be addressed from a financial perspective, not just from a symbolic fairness perspective. And so, that's kind of basically what I have for you. I, I would like to see council make a, a little bit of a move on this, and I think there's room to, to do some of that without making drastic changes one way or the other, and that's my thoughts. Will you answer any questions you have?
Any questions? I guess not. Thank you for coming.
You bet.
We have a delegation from Stars Air Acquaintance. Welcome.
Thank you.
I don't know who is going to be your voice, but you're all welcome to comment.
Thank you.
You'll all stand behind the microphone.
So, I want to thank your council very much for each...
Hey, you might want to introduce who you are to us.
Certainly. So, I'm Glenda Farnin. I'm the Senior Municipal Relations Liaison for Stars.
I'm Phil Howard. I'm the interim director of flight operations for Stars.
And I'm Jeff Morris, the provincial director for Southern Alberta Operations.
Great. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I thought that, you know, I'd just like to provide you a little bit of a brief update as far as Stars and what we're all about. I work very closely with your county council as well, so I've worked with 9% of councils across the... So, as a brief overview, we'll be fairly quickly with this, because we also do have some pertinent information for your council. We've been in Alberta for 33 years. We've now flown over 36,000 missions, and we are averaging nine missions per day across six bases, serving three provinces. So, we have 11 tele flight fleet. Five missions per day occur in Alberta alone, and we work with thousands and thousands of major gift donors, calendar campaign supporters, lottery supporters, three provincial governments, everything together in order to make this work. Time tools and talent are part of everything that we do. Our main focus is always to bring critical care to the patient. So, we do have the right tool as far as the helicopters in order to save time, saving time saves lives, as well as we work with every, we work with every aspect of first, first responders. We also have the tools, such as night vision goggles, capability to be able to fly at night, as well as universal blood now, universal blood onboard all the helicopters. So, we are the first in Canada to bring this life-saving measure right to the scene of an accident. We also have amazing talent in our pilots, being able to land in all kinds of diverse situations at a moment's notice. As you can see, these are some different missions there in the background, and we have world-class, well-known and recognized medical crew in the back of the helicopter. All these components together, put together Stars, and the fact that we can accommodate all sizes of patients, like Little Beckham here, who we flew as an infant. So, I wanted to give you an idea. I don't know if you know about the Mobile Education Unit, maybe you saw it in your community. We were here to work with your physicians and nurses in late January of this year, bringing that critical care piece and bringing that training to, you know, communities that we serve. And the fact that we fly all kinds of missions, so this is just giving you an, an idea of more than 55% medical emergencies. A lot of people don't realize that the majority of all Stars' response is for the general public. And of course, the fact that we are fueled by generosity. It takes a lot of people in order to make this happen and work. We work very closely with Alberta Health Services as well on the left-hand side. They provide 20% of our funding. 80% is fundraising. And now, I'll turn it over to Phil as well, there, to bring you some pertinent information.
So, Carstens Hospital and how we support it with a temporary landing zone. So, some of the facts and figures that we have going to bring to you today is really from the first of January 2014 to the 31st of December 2017. There have been 27 missions to the area of Carstens. Three rendezvous at the hospital, and that means somebody out in an accident somewhere coming in to rendezvous with us, and they haven't really gone through the ER of the hospital, so they've been held in the, either in the ambulance or maybe in a room in ER, but they haven't handed over patient care to the hospital. Out of those three, we transported one of those patients, and I've got there two no-transport. Really, we have a specialty team requirement to fly, so we have PICU and NICU. PICU are the pediatric intensive care unit, and the NICU are neonatal intensive care units. On both the two of no-transport, at the moment, we're not allowed to carry isolates in the back of the helicopters, because they've not been certified. We used to. Some of the rules and regulations have changed, so now we cannot fly a patient inside the isolate. And so, what happens now at the moment is both the PICU and NICU teams, we will fly them down to a hospital with their isolate that is classed as cargo. And then, when we get here, unfortunately, at the moment, we have to leave them here, and one of their ground transport vehicles will come down to the hospital and transport that isolate with the patient in the isolate back to Calgary, to the PICU and NICU. We also have done, from a patient point of view, from a Carstens patient, done a rendezvous at Clarets Home and also a rendezvous at Fort McLeod. So, between those years, first of Jan. 2014 to December 2017, we have serviced 27 missions into the Carstens area. Is this going to be done?
Yeah, that's the one there. Don't speak to hell.
Oh, there it is. So, just so you can see, obviously, you know the town, Father and I do, but I do see it from the air. There's the hospital, and then you've got the temporary landing zone, which is at the Fish and Water... Fish and Wildlife on the west side of the town. That is approximately 1.7 kilometers away from the hospital. And that then is in a closer detail, the hospital hangar at the Fish and Wildlife. To understand that the Fish and Wildlife have not abandoned the area there, but they're not flying helicopters in and out because of the mission that's changed. But they do have equipment stationed in the landing zone area and that whole building complex. And so they do, it does remain open for the Fish and Wildlife people.
It's been moved to the airport now.
They've moved to the airport now? Right, okay. Thank you. So, we've had some clarification, ongoing clarification with Transport Canada with regard to temporary landing zones. Temporary landing zones cannot be in a parking lot, road, or path, or area set aside for regular use by people, cars, et cetera. Temporary landing zones effectively require 180 degrees of approach and departure paths that are free from a built-up area. And the approach and departure pass cannot overfly a busy road that isn't closed at a low level that would cause a hazard or distraction to drivers. And that's through the departure or arrival phase. So what does it mean for the town of Carstens? Unfortunately, we have to stop using the temporary landing zone that is at the Carstens Hospital landing site, which is the Fish and Wildlife. There is a solution. It's not a great solution, but one that we consider called temporary, is to go to the Carstens Airport. It's around about eight kilometers to the hospital from the airport, mostly major highway. There is a 24-hour operation and access. It is lit for night operations, although we do use night vision equipment, so we don't necessarily need lighting. And there's also fuel at the airport. Advantage is, for the relocation, it's remaining close to the hospital and serving the Carstens area. It does offer the 180 degrees of approach and departure paths. Because it is an airport, they don't overfly the busy road or anything like that. The approaches are free from obstacles, and most of the time, we can be able to land into wind, which is ideal for safety for us. Alternatives. We'd like to work with town and council here to find another site that is close to the hospital as we can. It may or may not be likely further away from the present helipad, but we do need the cooperation of the landowners, town EMS partners. To put it in perspective, if the airport wasn't here at Carstens, we would be going to places like Fort McLeod, 42 minutes away, less if you have lights and sirens. The Lethbridge Airport is at 45 minutes or less, and the Lethbridge Hospital is 53 minutes or less. I haven't included any timing for lights and sirens because I don't exactly know what they will be doing, depending on patient care and the fact. So as I said before, we do like to, we would like to work with the council here to find somewhere that's relatively close to the hospital, so we don't have that 8.1 kilometer drive. Some of that, about two kilometers, is over gravel, which, depending on patient care requirements, may not help in that situation. We're going to work with you to identify something that's feasible as a temporary landing zone. We'll provide information regarding new temporary requirements, dimensions, materials, et cetera, to work. If requested, to engage potential donors for materials that may be needed, and provide information regarding the process of the new temporary landing zone, or even a permanent temporary landing zone with NavCanada, more importantly, with Transport Canada. That's it. Any questions?
How often do you use your fixed wing?
We don't have any fixed wing.
You don't have a fixed wing?
Stars does not have any fixed wing. We haven't had a fixed wing for about 25 years, oh, 24 years, 23 years.
So it's Alberta Health that has a fixed wing?
Alberta Health has the contracts.
And it's stationed in Medicine Hat, right?
They have bases all round, so there is Medicine Hat. There's Calgary that will really serve this area.
See, my daughter, 46 years ago, was transported by Stars in an isolate, and so that surprised me that rules have been changed.
Yeah. A lot of these rules, they're forced upon us. We're in a situation, now we're in a situation where we can carry the isolate as cargo, whereas only, I would say, months ago, we couldn't even do that.
So if you had a fixed wing, could you carry an isolate, loaded isolate?
I wouldn't be able to speak on behalf of a fixed wing. Their setup is different to ours. But I do believe it's a similar isolate.
So you're looking at the airport, or is this a temporary solution to the problem we have?
I believe that is a temporary solution. It's up to, you know, ourselves here today or in the future to come up somewhere that will service the hospital and its needs with the overall area.
I think it's important for us to look at that, like we talked about it earlier. By far, the safest place for any aviation is at a registered certified airport, by far. But we also care a lot about the patient. And to have eight kilometers of drive on a horrible road, just being a, I don't mean horrible road, roads are maintained by, on a, what's that?
It's a horrible road.
Well, just considering the patient aspect, with, you know, a ventilated patient or somebody who needs bag, a critical care patient that we would be picking up, that's a difficult road to be traveling. So ideally, if we could be close to hospital.
Okay, so you said you can't have these temporary landing zones because of these three reasons. The one that was at Fish and Wildlife, which one of these things, I mean, it's not a parking lot, so was it because it's the approach or is the can't fly over a busy road?
It's the approach. The approach, where it is, is over a built-up area. And Transport Canada are getting into the more robust situation where they're defining terms. So a built-up area is now defined as any building or structure that is in the approach path.
And our approach would be mostly into the 90 percent of prevailing winds from the west.
So that, in that area...
You would come in from the west?
No, no, the winds would be in the west.
Yeah, but you would come in from the east, so you'd have to go over town to get there.
Yeah, so going over all that new, not new, I don't know, residential area, that's the part.
Yeah, so I've got it up there. So there's the Fish and Wildlife. The winds, we drove out there today to have a look. The winds are coming from down here, going that way. We like to approach into wind. That is the safest way to make a landing. And so we're coming down this way. So all these buildings here are considered a built-up area. Now, we have had an incident this year, not an incident, we have come down to Carstens this year, where the winds were very, very light. And so the crew determined that they could approach from this way and then depart that way.
So what do you need as infrastructure for a temporary landing pad? How big a pad and so forth?
Well, there's, there are requirements. We didn't bring those today, because this is just like an introduction. But we've, where the hospital is, oh, sorry. Oh, no, I broke it.
Alex, can you hear that?
I can normally blame my son, but he's not here. So we did identify something today that we thought might be something, but we don't know. But just to the north here, there's some open ground. And it looks like it might be maybe some water tanks buried underneath or something like that, because it looked like there was pipes sticking out that were maybe for venting.
Is that the old CPR area? There, they've got, there used to be a bulk gas station there, so they're still trying to clear the soil and stuff. That's why the pipes are up there.
Right.
There might also be a disagreement who actually owns that land, between the reserve and the lands. So that's a bit of a controversial spot. Not be a good spot.
So, you know, that's why we say, you know, we would love to work with you, with our EMS partners and ourselves, to come up with somewhere where we'd be able to develop it as a landing zone, and it won't be a temporary landing zone. If it is a landing zone that we have that is not a temporary, which means it's either certified or registered with Transport Canada, there's going to be a cost for that. Now, without going into site specifics, it would be unfair for me to say this will cost you, you know, $40,000 or half a million, because we don't know. So, really, the town possibly with ourselves coming up with a criteria of what is required for the landing zone, we could possibly, you know, identify areas where we could go. And then from there, there'll be some engineering costs for that to be able to make it so that it's certified for the hospital.
When you're saying we can work in partnership with you, financial partnership, as in, is it all out of our pocket?
That's where I have had to...
I mean, I like partnerships, but I don't like it when you have money.
We are a charitable entity.
I get it.
I have worked with other councils as well, other towns, and some through the northern area of Alberta, where we are kind of a liaison to work with local community service groups, the county, the town, for whatever may be required. Also keeping in mind that, you know, it doesn't mean it has to be an elaborate pad. Some towns have a grass pad, but the fact that it has to be a registered site or else certified, so those are some different areas, you know, that have to be established. We're first just looking to work with you to identify some other areas within the town that are possibilities. You know, maybe it is town property. Maybe it is one of your residents who is willing to provide that, though, that aspect. You know, there's lots of different opportunities there. The main thing is that we at least start to look to identify some other areas on a long-term basis. You know, I know that, you know, councils now are more working on five-year strategic plans, maybe 10-year plans. So we're working with a lot of communities that way, that, you know, once we've identified an area, that we can establish work together. You know, maybe they're putting back some funds each year on a five-year kind of plan that still reaches the goal that's going to serve this community for several generations to come.
Perfect.
So that is our goal.
Council yourself? So what do you classify as a built-up area? Any residents?
Well, if you look at that photograph there, any of the buildings there, anything, you know, if we wanted to land, say there's a patch of grass that was wide open, met all the criteria, we didn't do anything, but we just knew it was okay to land there. That would not satisfy Transport Canada, because it is land set aside for the purpose of taking off and landing. So for them, that means that it has to be registered or certified. And so there's a process of that to get it registered and certified.
What about this piece of land right down here in the south, along the west bypass, 12th Street? It's called the Agger Dome right now, but...
So...
What? What? If there's a new hospital built there, then it's...
So, we have to, not only we work with Transport Canada, but, you know, our further health services and the town as well. Ideally, the absolutely best option is we land at the hospital, because we don't have a road ground transfer. And there's, can be complicated with a ground transfer. So we're taking a patient with IVs and ventilators and tubing and all that sort of thing from a patient, from a bed in the hospital onto a stretcher, and then that stretcher is put into the ambulance, and then the ambulance is taken to the aircraft, and that patient is taken off the ambulance stretcher, put into our stretcher, and then put into the hospital. So there's multiple places in that process where things could happen.
Every patient movement has risk.
Right.
So the question I have, in a larger city, you've got hospitals all over the city of Calgary. How do you land at their heliports when not, you've got structures all over the place? How does Transport Canada justify allowing you to fly over huge tracts of populated places, and yet they have a small town like this with a few buildings? I mean, I understand safety concerns, but then they take it to the nth degree, it's always about a what-if scenario.
Right.
Right? And the thing is, what if you do find a spot on the edge of town? What if all of a sudden, there's a developer that wants to build up a housing development around that piece of property that we have designated for the permanent...
Right.
...structure for Stars? And then all of a sudden, the rules change? Right? So how do you get around all that kind of stuff?
Well, in the first instance, all the helipads are either registered or certified. Now, the fight for Calgary, because it is in the city, all of them are certified. So when Transport Canada certifies a helipad, they look at a number of things. They look at sort of approach and departure paths. So if you imagine a wedge of cheese, and you tip it on its side, that is the profile where we fly down to make a landing at the helipad. And we also have a wedge of cheese going the other way. And depending on the surrounding area of that pad, the approaches are called H1, 2, or 3. So H3 is really, there's plenty of areas to land in case of emergency on the approach or the departure path. And so that means a single-engine helicopter can use that approach. Now, H2 and H1 are more restrictive. The wedge of cheese changes with its angle of approach. And also, depending on whether it's H2 or H1, depends, if it's an H2, there has to be emergency landing sites within 625 meters of the original site. If it's an H1, then there isn't any landing areas within 625 meters, but there are now restrictions on the helicopter that can use that. So for us, going into areas like the foothills that has one approach, is H1, we have to calculate a couple of weights with the temperature of the day and things like that. And we work out that, you know, if we're coming from here, going back into the foothills there, it's not going to be an issue, because we've just burned, you know, an hour's worth of fuel. And so we would be well below that weight. But in some instances where we do a very close-in scene called, say, around Calgary, we really have to work out, can we actually do it? Not only before we leave to go somewhere, we work out the projected fuel to get there, a possible amount of time on the ground, work out the fuel burn to come back, and we have to be low a certain weight for that day in temperature. So that's why it becomes an H1. Now, say the hospital was on the west side of town, and the helipad that you've decided to build was on the west side of that, it's not in a built-up area. You don't have to certify the pad. But as soon as you bring it inside what they deem as a, deemed as a built-up area, then they want it to be certified or registered.
So in reality, our only option would be on the east side of town? People want to come in from that direction?
No, if it's certified, we can come from any direction, because they've worked out those angles, those slopes, and the performance of the aircraft.
Plus certification or registering does protect that?
Right. Sorry, that's the second part. So if you do certify the heliport, then there are federally mandated setbacks for building. So if you wanted to do something, then you have to go.
Counselor Bangor first and then...
So the negatives on the airport as it is right now is that the eight kilometers and the rough road. So if we went into partnerships, it would be cheaper to go into a partnership and upgrade the road if the eight kilometers does not pose a problem with, if your lights and sirens.
Well, as I said before, the ideal situation is just north of the hospital there. I understand that's a concern to you, because there's no road transport. So we will wheel out our stretcher, go to the hospital, pick the patient up, come back.
The other consideration, sir, Phil, when you're talking about these patient transports and transfers, what, eight kilometers, one kilometers, either? transfers, what, eight kilometers, one kilometers, either you have, especially in a critical care patient management situation, you're either taking the physician out of the community, eight, 10 kilometers, whatever it is of time, or high-acuity critical nurse, or it'd be pretty difficult for just advanced life support paramedics. So out-of-hospital time is really important, as well as patient, patient risk with every movement. So it's not a bad thing, roads are awesome, it's great. It's the out-of-hospital time and just that extra, extra critical care patient management risk.
But if you had a building where you could stabilize before you transport, after you, after you moved it from the hospital, if there's more stabilization that is required, if you had a building that you could move that patient into that building, stabilize, then transport...
Well, you're just saying the ambulance in that case.
Yeah, it would just go ambulance to helicopter.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. The issue I have at the moment with the BK and the AW is that our stretcher's not compatible with the ground, I'll grab this.
Okay, so...
If you finish, it's Calgary Court and then the mayor.
I was just going to ask one question here. So if we find a designated area, we designate an area in town, you'd have to have somebody down here to make sure that's a proper area for the approaches and everything else, is that the idea?
The idea is that you get some everyday assistance to be able to certify that.
So we have to find a spot, then we have to get it certified by...
And really, our goal, our purpose here is to tell you the issues we're dealing with, and just be able to come to the community, because this isn't the first one, actually. There's a half a dozen that we're going to within the next couple of weeks to identify these same issues, and just want to work with council and the community to help find a situation outside of us just saying, you know what, we're just going to go to the airport because it's easy. So we want to be able to work with you guys.
The other point I want to make, on the north side, the parcel that you identified as being interesting, there is a highway in between that is there.
Right. So when you certify or register a landing zone, there's a thing called the helicopter operations manual, and that is the one that is stamped by Transport Canada, and it tells everybody what they need to do. So in that particular instance, that if we did go on that route, somewhere in that HOM that Transport Canada will insist on, is that road is closed for the duration of takeoff and landing, and possibly the patient transfer going across the road.
Okay, so...
So we do that in other places.
The idea would be, you would literally roll that stretcher across the highway.
Yes.
It's, there's a, it's a bit north, it's a bit west and north of the hospital. It's kind of kitty-corner. It's kind of up, yeah.
It's quite a...
We just rolled around that today.
Don't think this is our suggestion, we just...
Okay.
Maybe we can talk about this, it's, we don't know the community, obviously.
Yeah. So we'd like, you know, that's why we've come to you, we'd like to work with you. You know, the ideal is to have it, you know, on the ground, in the grounds of the hospital. That's going to be a major issue here.
But as it is, just regulatory-wise, that's not a good place, so we're going to go to the airport temporarily, until we figure something else out, and it's either land ownership, looking at sustainability, cost information, or certification.
Our mystery is...
Okay. Do you have any landing sites on First Nations?
Not, no. Good question, look, we do it, okay? Sturgeon, there you go.
Because there's, there is empty land right across the highway, it happens to be on the First Nation, but that shouldn't preclude us from...
Again, that's questionable if it is or not, but we can still work with them on that. The only situation there is having to close the highway.
There's all kinds of detour, you can take it by avenue.
That's only, that's only for the...
That's a detail.
Yeah, so that wouldn't worry about closing the highway.
We do that often in other...
In other than, of course, you know, for just the timeframe.
That's not really an issue then?
No.
I mean, there's other ways to detour and go back onto it.
We just, you know, the issues will be manpower. So you'll have security at the hospital, you possibly have RCMP or even like the EMS out there stopping traffic for when we come in, and when we depart, and when the stretcher goes back and forth. All the other times, traffic is open, free flow.
Yeah. So you see that as a preferred place right there, then?
No. Well, we're saying it's close.
Close.
We're trying to eliminate...
Eliminate out-of-hospital time as best as you can.
Right.
The best place is under physician care, which are in the hospitals. Outside of that, it's critical care patient management, and then with EMS cars.
And eliminating the extra ground transfer. So one less transfer for that patient as well. And not tying up your ground ambulance as well, then.
Ideally, you'd be right on that hospital ground on the west side, you'd have to cut all the trees out, open it up, and then put a pad right there, because it's probably plenty of rooms.
You'd have to get somebody from, from a heliport engineering point of view to look at it.
And look at it, yeah.
It's quite tight. I don't think you could do it, but I'm not the engineer.
And that becomes a just property management.
Right. Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for just...
We look forward to having opportunities to work with you in the future.
We'll go from here.
Our family has used STARS four times.
What? Wow.
Yeah. So it's...
So give up your hair.
Yeah, give up your hair, that's a good idea.
We brought you some information, all contact information is in here, Jeff, for all three of us, so that we can look forward to working with you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time.
You're welcome.
I'm going to slide my desk over, Counselor Lyons, because we're done.
Delegations?
Thank you, Jeff.
I'll get my Superman backpack. Okay, so moving forward, we talked before we go on to the next item, we have minutes that need to be adopted from April 3rd meeting.
Motion to adopt the May 3rd minutes.
Okay, Counselor Banger made that motion to adopt the May 3rd minutes. Any questions? All clear? Okay. And we'll move on to number six, 680, budget, review of the budget. I'll turn that over to Jeff.
So we passed around, and they're only eight and a half by elevens, because there's very few things different than last week. So I only have about eight or 10 things I even want to touch on, based on the feedback that you gave at the last meeting.
So when are we going to invest the MAGA plane glasses?
It's, I recognize it's a little... I struggled with, do I print 11 by 17 for about a half a dozen items that we need to talk about?
Thank you.
So the only change is on the first page, you'll see it says adjusted to reflect TCA budget. You'll recall, we added that water line on 5th East, and so when we do that, we take our recovered labor and machine time off that project and put it as an income. So we simply amended for the work that's going to be done there. And then other than that, we moved a couple of things within the budget. We added all of the delegation requests that you approved last meeting. So those were added.
What page are we looking at here?
Well, I'm just generally speaking here, because it really is very kind of general at this point in time. The only thing I wanted to mention that Hawken and I just caught today, and it's, let me find it here, I wrote it down, 272052. Hold on here one second. Oh, it was, it was on the very back page. Nope, I'm lying to you.
272...
Where in the world is my... 27, sorry, 274. If I could read my own handwriting, we'd be in excellent shape here. It's on page six, the second-to-last page. In the last discussion, we talked about the library, they wanted to reseal the Steko, and that was a $15,000 touch. Hawken and I got talking since then. That's a great candidate for a CFAP application, and the library board would be an eligible applicant. And we also talked about maybe pushing that until we had a better ICF agreement with the county. I talked to the chair, Mr. Quentin, today. He had no objections to pushing that a year. It didn't offend him at all. He felt that the building is still in good shape, this was very preventative, and it wouldn't bother them at all if we pushed that a year and then had them apply for a CFAP in the fall, for next spring. So I'd like to take that out before we pass this next week. Other than that, it's really just the things we talked about. The only other one, it's the second-to-last line on the whole budget, 272727. And we had some money in for capital, well, sure enough, the fuel tanks at the golf course started leaking last week because they were rusted out and have problems, so we had to get some new fuel tanks. I approved that, even though it wasn't specified in the budget, under the policy, I have discretion up to that amount. And so they're getting some new diesel and fuel tanks up there. And so that was one of the tweaks. So the things for tonight, because under the policy for budget, we need to bring you the mill rate bylaw next week, so that we can process taxes and get them going. This budget is built on revenue with a mill rate that is the same as 2017. Okay, so we took 2017s and applied it here. Now, in your package, you had a, what we call a mill rate working sheet. Let's see if I have mine handy.
Here, Jeff.
I'll scrap it here, it's fine. And so what that sheet shows is essentially, we take the municipal mill rate, we take the school requisitions, and we take the home for the age of requisitions. And we plug them in to try and give us an idea of what that means on the average. Now, these are not perfect formulas, because your assessment, and my assessment, and his assessment, all change differently. So they're based on the average. And the other thing to remember, particularly when you look at the non-residential side...
Excuse me, I'm sorry, apology. I just wanted to tell you, just so you know, that we just now landed at Carstens Airport for an incident, three kids.
Oh, boy.
So...
Yikes.
We're here, we're here.
Uh-huh, that's good.
Thank you.
Three kids.
Three kids.
It's a tough act to follow, talking about budgets. Well, we'll learn a little more about that, I guess.
It's not good.
Well, respecting that little piece of news, when we look at mill rate, we're simply looking on the average. So something is interesting to think about. You think about, in 2017, we had one building in non-residential assessment that added $600,000 worth of assessment. One project over by the post office, okay? So when we look at the average and say that the average increase in residential tax revenue will be X per property, 75% of that can be sitting on one property. So we do the math on an average, but, but really, one property could be actually carrying the lion's share of that entire increase for the year, based, you know, on those things. The other interesting thing with non-residential this year is because we took the golf course back, they were paying the school portion of the requisition as part of the lease. So all that now is distributed back amongst the general popular, non-residential buildings, because it isn't sitting on Black's End. So those were kind of some interesting implications when we looked at non-residential. But when we looked at the worksheet, and it's not the prettiest and most simple worksheet to understand, but if you go to the very bottom of 2018, we can see that we have about $4 million more in residence, in total assessment this year than we did last year. We can see that that's almost all on the residential side, because we removed the golf course from non-residential, but we added another building, so that washed a little bit. And we look at the real dollars, and we look at a few things. We have the municipal portion of the mill rate, which is 7.3675, and the school portion, which is 2.556, and the seniors, which is 2 point, or .2066. And again, this doesn't flow well, this little spreadsheet, but go with me. So one would say is the residential implication for this year would be 10.1297, non-residential And what that means in rates is that the residential rate would be up by .66%, because the school requisition is up by .66% on residential. So the municipal portion stayed pat, school's up. On the non-residential, it's down .59%, because the school requisition on non-residential came down. So that's how that would play as far as percentage changes in the overall mill rate based on the school.
Question, Counselor Banger?
Jeff, have you heard anything on assessments? Are they going up, going down?
They're, they're up, so existing assessment, what, was it 1.2%?
Something like that.
Just over a percent, very minor, plus any new assessment.
Right.
Yeah, so it's relatively static, but up about 1.2. So Joe and Jane, average home in the town, should expect to see, we're anticipating a one and a half percent or so increase based on assessment. Again, that's playing the averages completely, but that would be the implication. So that's what we want to, just get some direction on tonight, is if you're comfortable with that, then we will build the mill rate bylaw based on that. But if you want to see some changes, then this is, it's totally appropriate, and this is a time to have that discussion. Just two things to keep in mind, I recognize that we have to be cautious that we don't fall behind inflation with, with tax rates, okay? But you're factoring more than just the rate, you're factoring the assessment changes too. Those are inflationary influences on you and me. If the price of my home went up by 2%, and the rate stays static, I've still experienced a 2% increase because of my assessment. And the other thing is, in 2018, we increased utility rates, not a lot. It's a different kind of tax, in my opinion, you're just taxing a different way. So 2018 was the third year of our utility rate bylaw, which saw minor, but consumption water went up nine cents a cubic meter, for example. So that would be about a 9%, that'd be about a 10% increase on the consumption side. And the sewer charge went up a dollar, which that was only just a couple of percent, that was really minor, 2.5%. So you, you did increase taxation in the utility, if you want to call it that. And just by holding status quo, the average is a 1.6% increase on residential property and 1.5 on non-residential.
So we're talking about $26, $28 per household on the average house?
22 on residential, yeah. Yeah, and again, this is on the average, and new assessment's going to eat up a bunch of that.
Right.
So, but I can't say what your house changed in assessment compared to mine, I don't know that. I mean, we could know that, but we don't, we don't run a spreadsheet on every property in town. It's just too cumbersome to even start to, to deal with.
Mayor?
Essentially, when we talk about inflation, when you have done your budget, or presented the figures for us, that inflationary factor is also built in...
Correct.
...those figures.
Correct.
So in other words, that whole budget reflects inflation, therefore it is also reflected within the mill rate.
All of our reoccurring expenses, we apply an inflationary piece. So by holding the mill rate, if this is what council chooses, it actually gains us $24,500 in additional revenue over last year because of increased assessment. That's the impact. By keeping the mill rate the same, we actually net $24,500 in greater revenues because of assessment increase.
So my point of view, to add more revenue to what this mill rate is giving us, is unnecessary. It would be adding taxes, dollar, requisitioning more tax dollars from the taxpayer that we don't need at this time. We have reserves, and they're well-funded, we have taken care of the inflation within the budget itself, and therefore I'm satisfied with keeping the status quo from last year.
This may be a discussion for another time, but we talked, and we sat down for a day in Calgary with some projects that we wanted to look at and maybe want to move forward with. If we just keep sitting on this and sitting on this, will those projects that we are looking at ever come to fruition? Is there going to be a time when we're going to have to say, well, if citizens of Carson want this, we've got to pay for it?
You're talking...
That may be a later discussion, but we need to, we need to think that way.
You're talking recreation.
Post-people, leisure center, whatever else we discussed in Calgary.
No, I hear what you're saying.
Jeff? Counselor Banger?
Major infrastructure now, are we limiting our pavement and new services? Are we building our pavement and new services?
Limiting compared to when?
Let's say 2014.
Uh, no. No, I wouldn't say we are. We're using MSI pretty much, we're using the bulk of that for that purpose.
MSI is now finished, right?
We've got two more years.
Two more years?
Yeah, we have two more years of MSI. We've been forwarded a big chunk now, we're holding a large chunk for the next couple of years. But we have two more years on MSI, and we don't know what it looks like after MSI. We don't know what life is like after that. We've been told there's something, but we don't know. I would not suggest that we're doing less infrastructure, as far as underground infrastructure, than we were in 2014. No, I don't think so. Again, your assessments from 2014 are probably up. Well, I can tell you actually exactly. Total assessment 2014 was 313 million, it's 325 million now, and so even though mill rates haven't moved, we're still operating on a lot higher assessment over that time.
Counselor Snow?
Councilor Self?
So I guess this comment is a little bit like Counselor Court's. We have some projects, some tourism and economic development projects, like, that's going to require money moving forward. So I guess I just want to know what's council's feeling about those projects? You know, do we, do we want to take a lot of reserves if we need them, or do we want to start funding them, because we know they're going to come to this table sooner or later?
Well, one thing for that context, for every percent increase in mill rate, it's approximately $27,000. Just, just to give you some idea. So if we said, yeah, we want a 4% increase, well, then you've got about 110 grand that you're playing with, just, just so when you're kicking that around. And I'm not talking about points in the mill, I'm not saying you go from seven to 11, I'm just saying percent. So, you know, 4% on seven points, you're only talking through a quarter percent, .28. It, it's not dramatic, but it's about $27,000 a percent.
So it's not a lot of money. It's not going to fund a project, that's for sure.
Go ahead.
So when we, I don't want to talk about the leisure center, but maybe I'll use that as an example.
Yeah.
If we're going to support something like that, I believe that we can apply for grants, and that our, what the town needs to put into that initially is...
Seed money?
Yeah, seed money for, what, 70, 80, 90,000 dollars, and then I guess from there, we'd have to operate that.
Right.
But other organizations are going to come in and put their piece of the pie into that, and it's not going to cost us as much, right?
Yeah, one of the difficulties with trying to set this at a point in time is we don't know what those costs look like. It's not developed yet. If we were sitting here with an unfunded capital budget over five years, I'd be saying, yeah, we got to get to here, we just don't know. Now, should we know in this year? Yeah, I hope so. You know, I hope we do, I just, I'd be guessing.
Yeah. I mean... Councilor Berry first, and then Mayor?
So Jeff, until we get an inter municipal agreement with the county, and let's say they move forward with their water supply out of our water system, have we got money to upgrade our water treatment?
Well, so the only one on the table right now is Etna, so if I speak to that one. Etna does not require any infrastructure upgrades, to our knowledge, at this point in time, based on how it's designed and the total uptake that can be on there. And we're going to talk about that a little bit here further down, too, but based on the drip system design, it doesn't require upgrades. And the county's well aware of, when they start looking at Levitt, Mountain View, and those areas, that any upgrades to the system are going to have to be borne by them, if they're going to try and run infrastructure that way. That, we've, we've made that pretty clear, that, that if we don't necessitate the upgrade. So for example, for Levitt and Mountain View, in order to treat water at a fast enough capacity, we need a pre-piltration station. So in their design, they're considering that. When they're looking at their costs, and all that's being considered of what has to be, what has to happen up there to make it possible. So I don't anticipate large capital infrastructure on behalf of the town to, to accommodate that. That doesn't mean that, you know, we've talked about long-term needs for water plant down the road, we've talked about a lot of that, but keep in mind, you have reserves, 720-something thousand in major utility capital in the last four years. So that isn't going undeveloped, that reserve is not going undeveloped, it is being fed at a pretty healthy rate at this point. Now, knock on wood, it depends on utility rates and consumption, but so far, it's been good to us.
Mayor?
Want to go back to the need for looking forward and money to fund large projects? I think Counselor Groo is right, he will need to know how much all the partners are willing to come up with. And then you have also another, another possibility, the town does not have a debt that is very high. So there is a possibility for borrowing, but we also have to look long-term to see if it's sustainable within the budget and palatable to the citizens. So there is all those elements that will have to be weighed when the decision is to be made. And so I think it's a little premature, because we don't have a, a direct budget of anything, we don't know what we're talking about, really in terms of figures.
Counselor Self, and then Counselor Court?
So Jeff, getting back to my, getting back to my ECTV piece. If we're looking at, say, a 4%, you said it's not like a 4% jump?
Well, I meant like a four-point jump. So if the mill rate for right now is 10.12, I'm not suggesting it's a 14.12, that's 40%.
Yeah, right.
So I'm talking, you know, 4% on that overall mill rate.
So what does that look like in terms of the average household, how much?
Ooh, uh, it would, let me see if I can determine that relatively quickly here.
27,000 divided by 1,200,000.
About $60.
Uh, I've got, hold on. Uh, I think I got the right numbers in here somewhere, just give me one second. So I know that, hold on, I can deduce this a little bit. We know that 1.66%, this is on residential, because we have here, 1.66% equals 22 bucks.
Per household?
Per household, on the average, on the average. So high assessment, obviously, you're paying a little more, low assessment, paying a little less. But we're playing the averages. So you're looking at, at a, if it was a 4% increase, you'd be looking at roughly, was it 50 bucks? Just over 50 bucks on the average. So high-assessment homes are going to push 100, low-assessment homes are going to be in the 30, 20, somewhere in there, is what that's going to mean, yeah.
Counselor Court?
Well, I would just make a suggestion, and then before we get to this point again, next year, maybe we should have some of these ideas that we were kicking around in Calgary, we've been thinking about, a little bit more locked in, a little more, idea of what it's going to cost, things like that.
My hope would be by our September meeting this year, that's all on the table.
Good.
You know, in fact, it's, I wasn't thinking about this this morning, but I have a note to call Dr. Clark and see if I can take him to lunch, and see if we can get this thing moving along, because the intent is that all this stuff is sitting on the table. Well, it was, it was coming from my meeting with Mr. Tolle.
Yes.
Saying they're going to be coming to you, actually, in June with a very robust financial plan, that's, you're going to have to make some tough decisions on. So I wanted to have the REC Center moving along, so that we can discuss them in tandem.
Yeah, right.
So that's where I made a note and said, I got to get some of those folks to the table and get that moving along. So I agree with you, Counselor Court, it needs, it needs to move along. Now, one other thing we could do, Counselor Self, is this budget is built on the status quo mill rate, but we can take that money out for the library, we could apply that to, we could reserve it for ECTV General right now as kind of some of that seed stuff along the way, because we built a budget with 15,000 in. So there's no impact if we reserve it right now. We can do that quite handily without impacting anything. It'd give us, it would pay for the Tolly feasibility study, for example, it would fund that. And it could fund maybe some study on the trade corridor, if we had 10,000 dollars there for doing some research. It could give some seed money in those areas as well.
Okay, because really, that's what I'm...
Yep.
That's what I'm talking about.
I know.
Those sorts of things.
Yeah, but there was a little bit of a pot of money.
Yeah, so that's something, without impacting anything to do with the mill rate, we could set aside for that purpose when we come back on Tuesday.
And just a question, Counselor. And I know that, I think Counselor Court's on the same page, maybe, but we wanted to leave the whole REC facility thing out to have it citizen-driven.
Right.
At some point in time, are we going to have to grab that and run with it ourselves? Like, seriously?
It's, it's a danger, right? But maybe we can create the impetus, and then see if there is movement. It's always best to come from the citizens.
Yeah, and I think it has, but I think they, I think they run out of energy or steam or whatever pretty quickly, whereas if it's, if we take the ball and run with it, we have the collective energy of this group to keep moving.
If we can bring them along with us.
You know, if you don't mind me saying, yesterday, when we were in Raymond, was rather interesting to see, we, we had a debrief as to how the whole recreation complex, I mean, especially sports field complex, was started. And it was started really by bringing the whole community together in one event that had to do with a radio station and a contest. And because of that contest, they were all gathered, and they were there, and were totally behind it. So essentially, that's one issue, if you don't have the town...
You could shut me down, but I...
Probably not.
We just, we just had a delegation on the temporary landing block. Can we handle that with this budget?
With that budget? No.
No.
That's set, that can work.
Can we even start to handle it?
Uh, no.
But don't we have the reserves? Or we have money we can allocate if we needed to?
Could, yeah.
Right now, we were going to work on the airport.
Right.
And that was the idea. We worked on the airport with the ideas that STARS was coming there, and we did all the little bit of upgrade for their sake.
Exactly.
And all of a sudden, we realized that it's not satisfactory. How interesting.
Temporarily, it is.
It's their only option.
And how long is temporary?
It's there, nowhere.
And if you're dealing with Transport Canada, even the purchase of land is questionable.
But to, to go along with what you were saying, is it necessary to upgrade that road and maybe try to do something like with the type of asphalt we have put on...
That's what I see. It was bypassed.
And that might be, that might be a way that is not that costly for the county to try...
Jeff, you had a comment, and then Counselor Brown?
Just to Counselor Berry's, to kind of, if this helps, when it comes to the town purchasing land, developing land, putting infrastructure into land, you have a quarter-million-dollar reserve for that purpose. Now, that's the best priority in use for the day, by all means, that's at your discretion. There is a quarter-million-dollar land reserve for the purpose of the town purchasing land and developing land, if that's the best use. Right now, I don't foresee a bunch of competing priorities for it, but that's something we could discuss at the time. I might, and to that, I'm actually not opposed to seeing if the Blood Tribe would want to partner on that.
Well, that's what I was...
Right across the road with no obstruction.
That's what I was, I was wondering, I was wondering if that is not possibly...
To their advantage and ours.
Possibly the need for us to write a letter to the Blood Tribe and kind of give them a little bit of a heads-up on what STARS would like, benefits of all community.
Yeah. Counselor Brown?
I was going to say exactly that with the reserve, but the thing we also have to remember with the budget is that if, even if we, if we throw one more cent into the, into the airport, it's still eight miles away. The key is having it closer to the hospital, period.
That's a good point.
Right. So why would we put any more money into a road or one more dang thing out there if it's not, sorry, but if it's not helping getting kids to safe, you know, getting, getting them to the hospital faster? That's our goal. So if, and as far as working, we know that it's going to take more than a year to get this done. So it's not a matter of, of that this is going to even be in this budget. Odds are good, it'll come out of the next budget, and by then, we'll know what we're looking at. We'll know if the reserve will work with us, if that's in fact where we want to put it. I mean, it's a thought, I don't think we need to worry about it coming out of the budget right now.
Counselor Court?
I disagree, I'd fast-track this thing. We need to talk to the Blood Band, if they're agreeable, I don't know what cost to put a helicopter pad down what you need, but this is, she just mentioned three kids, we get all the dollars out of her.
For me, it's a love-saving opportunity that we can offer.
So I would fast-track and put it in this budget if we have to.
Counselor Self?
So I'm still unclear that with the land they're talking about, I think that land is under dispute.
Exactly.
So we can't say, well, hey, why don't you guys partner with us, and it's like...
No, we, we need...
I think the land is under dispute, so I don't think anybody can lay claim to it, period.
That's the Marathon Realty place where the...
That CPR.
Where CPR was there, yeah.
So I don't think any of that is, is, we're able to do anything with it, no. My other comment would be, I think, if I'm reading the tea leaves, Ray, I think we're all sort of comfortable with keeping the mill rate the way it is for this, but recognizing going forward, that we got to have a more robust discussion about recreation and facilities, because I think we do have, and I agree with the mayor, when, if we were to, if we were to approach the citizens of the town, I think we would have a number that would be, I think we'd have a significant number that would be in favor of us doing something with that. I think we have a number of seniors that would, with some of the things we've talked about with that facility, that would be on board, plus all the other groups and youth groups, so.
So if I hear what's going on on the table here, we're saying that at this point in time, we're not going to enter into changing the mill rate for those items, leave it as it is for status quo for this budget, and then by the next year, when we start talking budget again, then we'll go into it in a more rigorous manner.
Have a more fulsome discussion.
Yeah, okay. Obviously, agreeing, just a bit more of a plan in June, September?
With, well...
With what we're talking.
Yeah, some of the stuff they're, they're coming back to you in June 5th, with some plans with financial, I've, I've seen the financial plans, they've got good, robust plans put together. So this stuff is going to become clear here in the next six days, right? So I just don't want to see us sitting on it again and again.
Yeah, yeah. It's important.
Yeah. Okay, Mayor?
I just want to know, does council want us to direct administration to write a letter to chief and council to address that need for a helipad?
Absolutely.
And with the mention that they could do a presentation to them, and why they think that location is best for our joint community? Is that something, a recommendation that I could make? Okay, all right.
Counselor Berry had a comment first there.
Before we make, before we consider that, I, I'm along with Counselor Self, that that land is under dispute, absolutely.
Yeah, but can decide that.
One thing I would, if you come further east, it's not.
It's where the old Baylock was.
So it's just...
Not under dispute.
It's just land that is free.
As you head east or west, then it is, agreed. So I'd have to look at the exact map.
Who's Marathon Realty? How do you get ahold of them?
I've, I've got them.
No.
Okay. We should have that. No, not where Baylock was, that was, that was leased land from the Blood Tribe.
Yeah, some of it, it's always been reserved and is reserved.
Yeah.
So I make a recommendation to council that we direct administration to write a letter to chief and council regarding the need of land for a helipad for STARS to benefit both communities.
Close to hospital.
Close to the hospital, right?
Yeah. So we have a recommendation, all in favor?
Carrie?
Thank you.
One more thing I'll just mention, because again, I like you folks to sleep well tonight.
We like to do that.
Is that you're in the fortunate position of having fully, of having fully funded contingency accounts right now. You have $100,000 in council-approved capital, which is just contingency in the year, and $50,000 in council-approved operating. And we've been in the fortunate position, we haven't had to spend a lot of that last few years, so we've topped it up and it's full. So that stuff in the year, priorities that come up, that you want to support.
Yeah.
You know, there's $150,000 there available, there's reserve accounts that are healthier than they've ever been. We're in a position where we have some access, if there's a priority. So I just, I, I point that out, that we're in a position of having fully funded contingency accounts, which isn't always the case. But right now, in this budget, it tops them up to 100,000, 50,000 respectively.
I was just going to ask you a question, Jeff, what your thoughts would be, if we were to get the helipad approved, the location approved, is that something that we want to talk to the county about, too, to participate?
It's actually participate in something.
So maybe that letter should be going to the county as well.
Yeah, good, good point.
Okay?
Good point, yes.
So maybe we should include that as a CC to them, or something in there.
Right? Sounds good.
Okay.
So that kind of get both those items on the agenda, both budget and mill rate.
Yeah.
Mayor? Mayor?
So what is required of this council right now regarding those mill rate? Is a recommendation for a bylaw to be drafted?
So you have a budget policy which requires me to bring you a bylaw next meeting.
Okay, so otherwise, you will do that, yeah.
You are getting a mill rate bylaw next week, my recommendation will be that you pass all three readings on it next week, because we've discussed it for a number of weeks in our own now.
And we're generally all around the table in agreement with it at this point in time anyway, right?
So I will tell you, too, we make that recommendation that you pass at the first council meetings, but that is because if there's something comes up, you have a buffer. We can pass it in the second meeting, it just gives us a short window to turn things around, but if we run into a rec next week or a change of priorities, we've got options.
Right.
But I'll have it on the table, Hawken drafted it today, so I'll have it on the table next week.
Thanks.
Wonderful. Okay, these other items here that we've got here.
Make a motion to be break for 10 minutes.
Yeah, so I was going to say, we've got an announcement.
There's just a vegetable platter on the back table, too.
Okay, we have a motion to break?
We can't make, you can make a motion as a CCW. You can make a motion to recess.
You made that one.
Yep.
All in favor?
Can you imagine if you made a recommendation, you would have to wait...